All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is called to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of August 4th, 2020. Public comments, community announcements, and recognitions, anything? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item A is to approve the minutes of the special Public Works Authority workshop held July 21, 2020. Item B is approve the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting July 21, 2020, and C is approve the consent to assignment and assumption of contract for CDBG Administrative Services from Milli Vance Incorporated to Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper Incorporated, DBA, Cardinal Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Let's move on to item four, which means a unanimous consent, I'm sorry. Discussion and acceptance of the fiscal year 2019 annual financial statement independent auditors report. Kim?
Yep. So, to save time, we're going to post the video that was provided by the auditors to our Facebook page, and we did show it during the executive session, but we have Crawford, Frank Crawford here, Crawford &amp; Associates, to review the audit. And we've been with them, just so you know, a little background, since what, '86?
Gosh, I don't even want to admit that, but all I know is I had a lot more hair and I wasn't wearing a mask back then.
Over a long time, and I will tell you, when I call them, it's like I'm walking across the hallway and talking to my coworker. I know them so well, and if, for instance, Jennifer's our point person, if she doesn't know the answer, she sends me to Brenda. If Brenda doesn't know, she'll send me to Marcy. If Marcy doesn't know, which is, that would never happen, but if Marcy doesn't know, she sends me to Frank, and so, they've been with us a long time, they're a good partner. And with that, that's it.
Well, thank you, Kim, and I'm not going to take up much of your time. I know you watched the 23-minute video. I watched the same thing and thought I needed to stab myself in the thigh with a ice pick about halfway through it. It's about 21 minutes too long from an auditor perspective. There's really only about four pages in this entire 86-page document that's actually the auditors, and that is the two reports they issue, the opinion about whether or not they think the financial statements are clean or are accurate, and then whether or not they found any kind of findings or noncompliance. And so, from the video and from reading those four pages in here, it basically says, yes, the auditors issued a clean opinion, so everything is accurate, and they also had no findings of noncompliance or internal control or anything of any substance. So, the auditors pretty much stop right there. They don't analyze financial condition, they don't, they don't tell you whether or not you got good reserves, that's really not their job. Their number is basically to say whether the numbers the city gave them are correct, and that's the role that we play along with Kim, is to prepare this 86-page document so that the numbers are correct and that the appropriate bases of accounting are followed and that the numbers are accurate, and to minimize the numbers of noncompliance and other internal control issues, which has occurred. Now, financial condition-wise, it's a little bit tougher to understand. This is 86 pages where most of the pages are full of the one thing that most nonaccountants don't care for, which is rows and rows and columns of numbers, sometimes so small that you need a pair of reading glasses in order to interpret them. So, one of the things that we do for most of our governments is that we, we scale this into a model that we call the performature, which basically allows the government to say, on a scale of 1 to 10, how are we doing? Because everybody seems to understand that. If I said 10 was representative of excellent financial health and success, and a 1 or a 0 was representative of poor financial health and success, where does Guthrie slot in? So I calculated those numbers based on the most recent audit report, and we slot in at a 7.5. Now, 7.5 on our scale is actually quite good. A 5 is considered satisfactory, a 10 is impossible to reach, and a 0 is impossible to reach, although the government of Puerto Rico is testing my 0 theory with as bad as their financial condition is. We do this for probably 100 governments around the world, including a lot of governments in Oklahoma, across the US, and about 11 international governments, and then for the US Department of Interior. 7.5 is actually right in the middle of where most of the Oklahoma governments that you're very similar to. Edmund, for example, was a 7.2, Yukon maybe a 7.1. I've had a few governments score in the eights. The highest government that has ever scored is actually one in Georgia that scored once in 20 years, they scored a 9.1. That's the only time I've ever seen anyone score in the 9s. So a 7.5 is a good perspective. I think the score went up from where it was a year ago, indicating that we've had a couple of years of tightening our belts, we've had a couple of years of adjusting our rates, we've had a couple of years of living within our means, and our financial condition has improved over that time. So, what I'd like to do is maybe every year, come back maybe once a year and kind of tell you what that score is every year, so that way you can kind of say, well, we were a 7.5 last year, what are we now? Well, if you're an 8, that means you got better, and if you drop down to the 6s, that means something else happened. And it measures about 18 or so what we call financial statement ratios that are unique to governmental accounting. So it doesn't really work in the corporate world, it's designed basically just for the government. So, that's all I really wanted to say. There's really not a lot of bad news as far as financial condition, and there are certainly no bad news related to the audit. So, that took me about four minutes, so I went over my time by about a minute and a half, but that's pretty much what the 23-minute video was trying to tell you, just, it's a little more complicated to do it that way. So, any questions? I'll try to answer anything that's in the financial statements or related to the financial statements or the audit.
That was easy.
That's, that isn't, that was, that was my goal, make it easy. So, then this guy's going to get up in a little bit, and he's going to confuse you like crazy by throwing a lot of numbers at you, so, but he'll do a good job, he's actually quite, quite sharp, so. I'll stick around for that discussion, though, just in case. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question for the rest of the council. Did you look at page 39? We talked about this last year. We won't get into depth, but I wanted to point it out to you. Down at the bottom, there are the ambulance fees. We're upside down over $10 million in ambulance collection, 10.1. Last year we was 9.2. So we've gave away a million bucks this year. And we talked about, well, we're going to get some people more aggressive on billing, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that. I don't know if they didn't do it, I don't know if they did do it, but I'm telling you we're another million bucks we just throwed out the window out here. And it makes me question why we're in it. I mean, I know why we do it, but why we haven't put more attention on finding a cure for that? A million bucks? Tenny, what is it, $600,000 to fix Sooner Road? We talked about, we talked about between 500 and a million, and we throw a million out every year. So you guys need to be kicking that around, and we need, you know, I'll shut up now, but that's something that I wanted to point out that I've kept my eye on, and it's another million bucks right out, right out the window of everybody's money that we've set up here and let happen. Are we doing the best we can? I don't know. We need to kick over some rocks and see if the chief really got the more aggressive billing people. If he got all of that stuff that we've talked about done, I think we need to dig into that down the line.
Leroy, did you have something?
Just a few comments, because it's, it's a little more complicated than just a million dollars. For example, I didn't update it this year yet, but we can, but if you look at, our records go back to 2012, and just to pick the year out, 2014 and '15, the '15 budget year, our billing was just under 3 million, 2.9. Well, you have to adjust off of that, all the discounts, Medicaid, Medicare don't pay 100% of your billing. Large insurance companies, they negotiate a rate as well. So, of that 2.9, 1.3 was written off, and then you have another segment that are just uncollectible accounts, people just don't pay their bills. And you can't refuse them ambulance service because they didn't pay their last ambulance bill. But, over, last year when we went through this, we did from '12 to 2018, and adjustments for Blue Cross, Blue Shield, insurances like that, Medicaid, Medicare, $7 million was write-offs because of the adjustments on pay ratios from those entities, and another 4.8 was bad debt where people didn't pay. Well, our auditors and our financial advisors, normally you would write that off, but it just keeps building because it goes forever.
Because you have to show it as a public entity, right?
Correct. And so, it always is a humongous number, but it goes back a number of years. And, and we can look at it again and give an updated report on what was for this year. We did try to do some things, and I can get in more details, but we tried to work with the legislature to get ambulance bills added to the state income tax recapture program. Of course, with COVID-19, they didn't have much of a legislative session, so that didn't go anywhere. It looked pretty favorable until COVID-19 started. I know the chief has been looking at options as far as billing, don't think we've made any substantial progress there, but there has been some discussion, and, and we can provide a, a report at a later date on that. But all I wanted to say tonight, it's a little more complicated than, yeah, there's a million dollars.
Oh yeah, we talked about it last time, but the thing of it is that negative number has grown a million bucks in a year. And I realize there's write-offs and all of that, but I think we can do better somehow, surely.
If I could interrupt, but I think we need to get back on topic here, on the accepted report.
Well, it's in the report.
Yeah, Frankie, how do we compare to other communities when it comes to it?
You know, I, all I would echo is that, you know, because you're a public entity, you're really not allowed to give away funds, so even though we may write them off for accounting purposes in the system, we still show everybody that owes us money, and it's much like a utility bill, except Leroy made a great point. If somebody doesn't pay their final utility bill and moves away, 10 years later they come back and they want to set up a deposit to reestablish service, we're going to notice right away that they owe money from the 10 years ago, and we won't provide them service until they pay both that old bill plus their new deposit. You can't do that in the ambulance world. In other words, you can't refuse service. So, the control mechanism that we have that keeps utilities from becoming extremely large isn't there for ambulance, and therefore, because of that, you have this eternal growing allowance for accounting purposes, even though we may bill a million, we may collect about 300,000, the other 700s is kind of there in limbo, and if you can get it, you can get it, and if not, you don't get it, and we don't wait until you get it. We basically say, look, historically, you're just not going to collect that, so we create that allowance and we modify it every year to basically be an estimate of what we think is uncollectible. But, again, if you know who owes you, you have the ability to go and seek collection, it's just a little more complicated in the ambulance world because of the lack of the enforcement ability that we have on the utility side, so that's all I'd add.
You can always privatize it and let them take the law.
Well, that, that goes above my pay grade, that's you guys, so.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Brian?
Aye.
Don?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Yes.
Aye. Okay. It's all of us, unanimous? Moving on to item five, discussion of possible action to approve resolution number 2020-09, agreeing to file application with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for financial assistance through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program, with the loans proceeds being for the purpose of wastewater system improvements, approving professional service agreements, and containing other provisions related thereto. Alan Brooks?
Actually, I'm John Wolf, Alan is not here tonight. I do have socks on, so that'll verify that I'm not Alan Brooks. I haven't quite got to a point to where I'm comfortable with the mask, is this okay that I don't wear as I speak into the mic? We met a couple weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, and had discussion. Your city manager, Leroy, had addressed kind of the plan as far as the wastewater treatment plant, and did a very good job of thoroughly identifying the funding ability of the wastewater treatment plant, also went through the costs associated with that particular project. And so what you have in front of you tonight is the resolution that's required by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board when you avail yourselves of their program, that you authorize us as your municipal advisor, financial advisor, to submit the application, and also engage professionals, which will be our firm as municipal advisor, and the Public Finance Law Group, and Nate Ellis is here with their firm as bond counsel on this transaction. I, I didn't, maybe before I walked in, you said there's a five-minute limit, I listened to Frank get in within five minutes, I don't think I've ever been able to get into, within five minutes on anything, but, long story short, what you have in front of you, like I said, is a resolution authorizing the application. I want to hit a couple key bullet points. When I was out here, like I said, two to three weeks ago, we were looking at the financing term that you're, you would have in association with this financing, what made the most sense, keeping the term as short as possible, and that we were in a very low interest rate market, and it's, it's never a good time to borrow, but it's the best time to borrow when you're at US historical lows. And we actually, we're working on a transaction in the city, for the city of Bartlesville for their authority, they approved a loan last night. Now, they're looking to fund 30 years, and they approved a loan at a 1.61% fix for 30 years. Your rate that we discussed a couple weeks ago, I believe, was a 1.58%, as to where the calculation is actually done based on the market on a daily basis. Looking at today's rates, or actually what was posted yesterday, that rate has dropped from a 158 to 144.
Nice.
So, what we're looking at is locking in a rate that's approximately 10 days from the time you close. We're looking at closing this transaction as early as November, more likely December this year. Don't know where the market will be at that time, but it was important to let you know, at a 144, and at this 1.61 for a 30-year term, it's the lowest interest rates that the board has ever had on their program, which has been in existence, Nate, what, 30, 35 years? And so, it's very advantageous for your citizens. What that means to you in borrowing $16 million is about a quarter of a million dollar in savings between when I talked to you last and today. Let's knock on wood and hope we maintain the, where we're at, but once again, not everything's always a win-win. The economy, the global situation has obviously caused rates to go down, but at least you can take advantage of that, and let's hope that the rates stay in there. Be glad to answer any questions that you have. This debt, we've, Mr. Alsop for, over two years, has put you guys into a position, and what Frank Crawford had mentioned to you in his discussion, that you put yourself in the best position you could possibly be to go to, to the market, and in this case, you're going to Oklahoma Water Resources Board State Agency. So, you are now in a position to where I don't think that, based on the timing, the construction time period, when you would go out to bid, that you could have asked for, at least at, on this date, a better position for you to go ahead and address one of your larger infrastructure improvements you make for a municipality in Oklahoma or any, any other municipality in the United States. So, be glad to answer any questions that you have. I have material that we can go as in-depth, or stay at this level, and, and just answer any questions regarding the resolution you have in front of you tonight.
So, once you file the application and they approve it, we can't lock it until after we get bids, right?
No, actually, let me go through that process. With the approval tonight of the resolution, we're going to start working on the application, the application will be submitted in mid-September. The board will probably take two months from mid-September to mid-November, maybe early November, and, and they do their own credit review, just like any lender, and then hopefully that this would go to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board regular meeting either in November, which is very optimistic, more likely December. You cannot lock the rate in until you are within 10 days of when you expect to close the transaction. We expect to close the transaction towards the end of December, but that a lot depends on what is accomplished over the next three months. But whatever date that is that we close, approximately 10 days before that, we'll, we'll lock in the rate. And typically, the board, 10 days, they have allowed a few, maybe as much as two weeks, but certainly as, as the market, we're looking at the market, we're going to push the board to, if we think that the market's still in there, to where we're, based on where we're at today, we're going to push, push the envelope for you guys. But it won't be, it won't be much earlier than 10 days prior to when we plan to close.
Do you think it's going to go up or down?
No telling, you don't know.
Walking away from that one, I, I don't know.
I thought I'd ask. I thought I told it out there. So where does the, where does the December date come from, end of December, is that just because of the timeframe we're in?
Well, what you have to have is you have to have, there are certain requirements that have to be met in order for the board to consider you at their formal board meeting to approve the loan, and what you have to have is bids in hand, and so, or if you don't have bids, that's typically where you got to be. And so, right now, based on weekly discussions with your engineer, right now, that's more practically probably having bids in hand around Thanksgiving, which we would have missed the board meeting for November. And what makes it a little more complicated is the Water Resources Board has a meeting every month, and, but they can cancel one of the months remaining, and they have a meeting later this month in August on the 18th, and then they have a meeting September through December, they can only cancel one of those meetings. And we have had multiple discussions with the, the board regarding at least guaranteeing that, hopefully at least have a December meeting, and if they decide to look at canceling the December meeting, for us to sit down, because there are a lot of other communities that are lined up, and, but the board does not determine if they're going to cancel any meetings between September and December until they have their next board meeting, and that's, that's when they decide if they want to cancel a meeting. So we're going to do everything we can to make this happen.
Anybody got a question?
So you just need a motion from us, is what you need?
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. James?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Yep.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Which, thank you. This brings us to the end of our Guthrie Public Works meeting, and we can open our city council meeting. So, let's go straight to the consent agenda. Item A, approve the minutes of the Guthrie City Council meeting held July 21st of 2020, and B, confirmation of the Guthrie Public Works action on accepting the fiscal year 19 annual financial statement and auditors report.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Also passed unanimously. Item three, discussion of possible action to approve resolution number 2020-10, adopting the terms and conditions of the USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant Agreement as presented and authorized, and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement. Kim?
This resolution, it's, it's related to the, the grant agreement that we have that was already approved back in December for the fire department, and the resolution is required as part of the grant.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. James?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discussion of possible action to approve resolution number 2020-11, accepting the FAA grant award for airport improvements for project number 3-40-0036-019-2020 at the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. Shalom?
So the city of Guthrie will submit an application, a grant application for the rehabilitation of the terminal apron to the FAA. However, FAA requires that by grant agreement, that it be approved and accepted by resolution of the city council governing body, and by accepting this grant resolution prior to receipt of the grant agreement, will also allow for expediting it upon receipt. The total project cost is $626,150. The FAA will pay 90%, which will be $563,535. The city share is 10%, and this is, it's going to be a multi-year grant, so the 10% of our fiscal year 21 grant is split with the city of Edmund, that's at $16,481. So, in actuality, we'll be paying 800, or, sorry, $8,240.50. The CARES Act grant is going to pay for $46,134. Normally, we would be paying the full 10% and bringing this up to, well, the 16,000 plus the 46,000. So I would ask that you guys would approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Don?
Yes.
Brian?
Aye.
James?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes unanimously. On to item number five, thank you, Shalom, and you're doing this one too, though. Discussion and possible action to board number 2020-08, Rehabilitation Terminal Apron Project Number 3-40-0036-019-2020, to Contact Incorporated in the amount of $548,800, subject to the receipt of the FAA federal grant for said project. Shalom?
So, for the grant award, that's the one we're talking about, right?
Yes.
So the low bidder was on July 15th, 2020, the share of the city Guthrie received competitive bids for this project, and five bids were received. The low bidder was Contact Incorporated out of American Arrow, Oklahoma. The city's airport engineer also reviewed the bids, and they recommend that the base bid and alternate bid number one be awarded to Contact in the amount of $548,800. The cost, again, of the contract is going to be covered 90% by FAA, and the amount of $563,535,000, 10%, is covered by the CARES Act grant, $46,134, and that's for the fiscal year 20 portion of it. Then for the fiscal year 21, that portion of it will be covered 90% by the FAA, and our match will be $16,481, which again, will be split with the city of Edmund.
So moved.
Second.
And motion is seconded. Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shalom. Item number six, discussion and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination of Brad Latham for a second three-year term through June 30th of 2023 on the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
Most have been moved and seconded.
Hey, I'd like Brad.
Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. That motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to award bid number 2020-0- Item number seven, discussion and possible action to award bid Number 2020-09 Traffic Lights for Division and Oklahoma and Division and Harrison to Traffic Signals Incorporated of Edmond for $74,890,000 and allow the mayor to execute a contract. Tenny?
Seal bids were received and read aloud on July 21st, 2020, in the council chambers. We had three bids received. Traffic Signals, Inc. was the lowest bid. This project will include dedicated permissive turns, new wiring for the entire signals, replacement of the roadway luminaires, and all proper signage per MUDCO standards at each intersection. Myers Engineering has reviewed the bids and recommended awarding the bids to Traffic Signals out of Edmond, Oklahoma. Total expense for this project, including the engineering fees, will be $84,890.
Eighty-four or seventy-four?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. Eighty-four with engineering?
With the engineering. Total price of the project was eighty-four, eight ninety.
All righty, I entertain a motion. Nobody has any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
James?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve fiscal year 2020, 2021 School Resource Officer Agreement between the city of Guthrie and Guthrie School District of Logan County. Don, what do you got?
This is our annual agreement for the SROs for the school. It's, I can break it down however you want. It's for two SROs. We put three out there on the condition that we can bring one back anytime we need to. They pay essentially for 75% of the year. We pay for the three months in the summertime, and the, the money we're bringing in from the school this year has gone up just a little bit because of merit increases and stuff like that.
So, they're paying 75%?
Of the two, of two of the officers. We, we put one out there that the city takes full responsibility for, but it's, the condition is we can bring them out anytime we need to.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With motion and a second. Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Passes unanimously.
What, what was the dollar amount that were approved?
There's not a dollar amount.
Seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and ten cents.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure it's in the minutes.
Seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and ten cents. It's in the agreement, too.
Okay. Moving on to item number nine, discussion and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to appoint Darrell Covington to the Guthrie Historic Preservation Commission to fill an expired term through March 31st of 2021. Go ahead, Dan, what do you got?
Yeah, I'm just going to add that we have a current opening on the Historic Preservation Commission. It's one that the Logan County Historical Society fills, so the recommendation from the Logan County Historical Society is for Darrell Covington, and so that's why we'd be looking forward to have him appointed to our commission.
So, moved?
Second.
The motion is seconded. Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Don?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Item number 10, discussion and possible action to approve ordinance Number 3336 to close portions of Fourth Street between Logan Avenue and Noble Avenue, portions of Sixth Street between College and Logan Avenue, and Warner and Cleveland Avenue, close, closed portions of Seventh Street between Warner Avenue and Cleveland Avenue, closed portions of Warner between Third and Fourth Street, closed portions of Mansour between Third and Fifth Street, and closed portions of Washington between Fifth and Seventh Street, and Seventh Street and Eighth Street, per PC Application 20-003. This is all down in the flats, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's what I was just going to summarize. I wasn't going to go through them all.
I was going to see if you could read that again.
Yeah. These are all streets that are down in the, in the flats area in that, and I just want to add that, you know, there are some existing utilities there, but at this point, it's just closure, so it's not going to affect the utilities, so all the utilities were happy, and it still is going to allow access to the Little League fields down there, as well as, you know, Fifth Street's open through under the Viaduct, so this is some of more of the interior streets that would be looking for closure.
I think that's what we discussed, wasn't it, some time back?
Yes, that is correct.
So, Dan, I need you to explain the, why we're closing up north. I'm, you know, on the map, I don't know if they have a thing to put it up. I'm good with all of the stuff down around Warner and Fourth and all of that, but Sixth Street off of College going south?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any reason for closing that. That's a good road. And there's also the three blocks, I'm doing this from memory, Fifth to Eighth on Washington?
Yeah.
Those are at the north end.
Yes.
And to me, we go to all the trouble of getting the flats set up, and we have the utilities and all that in there, and then we start, I mean, I, I get the other part of it down there where there's no problem, but I don't see any sense in closing those up towards the north end of the flats. I don't, I don't see any good reasoning.
Right, I mean, in general, it's just the fact that obviously, then we don't have to maintain them any longer and that, because as most anybody knows, in the flats, it's all city-owned property, there's no development down there and that, so there's really no reason for those streets to be open from an access standpoint, because there's nothing there to provide access to. So, by closing them, we essentially don't have to maintain them to that point, but we can also better utilize the flats for when we have special events and that, because now these streets will be closed. So, I believe that's a lot of the reason. Tenny's here, if, if there's some other, you know, in that, because a lot of this was also in coordination with Public Works in that to take care of that, but in general, that's kind of why these are looking to be closed for those two reasons.
Well, Sixth runs north from the church all the way to College.
Yes.
And it's a pretty good road, and it runs right down to where the action is. I don't, I mean, because the church is on one side, and when they have the bluegrass, it's usually on the west side of the street. It's a street that runs between those two.
I might clarify.
Okay.
We're not closing the road to take them out. We're closing, they're no longer public roads. Yeah. And that gives us complete control, so when we set up with special events and we block them, they're not public roads anymore. They're roads that belong to us as part of our property that we own, adjacent to it. It's just that the, they no longer would be public roads when we want to set up different events down there.
So, we're not going to barricade the road, is what you're saying?
We're not going to barricade the road. Now, some of them will disappear, and Tenny probably can explain which ones.
But I know the one he's talking about cuts right through, so.
Yeah. Tenny would be the best one to, to explain how we plan to operate them.
What, we had took this to the street committee quite some time back. Had been to the council once before as well, back, back prior to Mumford and Sons. What we were looking at doing, there's four blocks right in the area that you're talking about, Don, that, that we looked at and made a recommendation to close, and that was just to then, we would, would not have to maintain them no more. We could let them roads grass over. It would provide a larger green space. There would still be the main access that you're talking to coming into the heart of the flats by the church. That road would remain open all the way down to, I believe it's just to Mansour. So, once you reach that point, then it would just become a, a large, open green space. One of the reasons behind closing a few of these roads was not only to provide more of a green space, but during floods and activity that we receive like that, that we lose all of our rock off of our roads down there, we wouldn't have that issue in the future.
It's just a weird combination with those up there. I don't like them, I can't support it, but.
I understand.
The south end, I think's a great idea, but it makes no sense, those few blocks up the north end.
Are there any other questions?
So, do you want to relook at it? What do you want to do?
Anybody else have any questions?
That's up to you guys.
If not, I entertain a motion?
So, moved?
The motion is seconded to approve. James?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
No.
Brian?
Aye.
And I am an aye. With one abstaining, I'm sorry. Motion passes. Item number 11, discussion and possible action to adopt and approve ordinance Number 3335, closing portions of Dale Avenue, Cotterell Avenue, and all alleys within blocks eight, nine, and 10 of Oliver's First Edition located east of 11th Street and north of College Avenue, per PC Application 20-002.
Yes, another street in, or closures. This one is the little area that I call like a notch that goes north of, of College there. It's 11th Street, as it said, Cotterell and Dale in that area. It's still a little, it's probably the only portion that's north of College, that an area that's in the city limits. Anyway, there was a application in to close the far eastern portion of that subdivision. The roads physically do not exist there. There's actually no infrastructure in those areas. It's either in 11th Street or to the west. And so, there was a request to close those streets, because they're going to have the desire to eventually vacate all of that so they can build homes, and then all the accesses would be off of 11th. And so, with that, if there's any questions?
We're not really closing anything.
Right, in this case, physically, right, physically, nobody would know the difference.
Right.
Right.
All right, any other questions?
So, moved?
Do we have a motion?
Some moved?
Second.
So, moved and seconded. Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous pass. Item number 12, discussion and possible action to approve ordinance Number 3337 to zone a 77.24 acre property located in southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 16, North Range 2 West, generally located on the east side of Midwest Boulevard, at the intersection of Midwest Boulevard and College Avenue, from no existing zoning classification, classification to I-1 restricted manufacturing warehouse district, per PC Application Number 20-004. Dan?
Thank you. This is the city property. It's the, we're the proposed industrial park, has been looked at for many years now. As you indicated, it's over there off Northwest Boulevard and College Avenue. The net acreage is around 77.24 acres. I'll just go over some of the land use stuff, and then I'll leave it to the commission, or to council, as well as I know there's people here to talk. The eventual intent would be to subdivide it for, again, the industrial part. The comprehensive plan designates it as industrial business park. It's been in the comprehensive plan, obviously, for now 20 years. That's how old our comprehensive plan is. It also, in the comprehensive plan, there are a number of the goals and, basically, the goals for commercial and industrial development that this rezone would support in that. So, again, from a comprehensive plan standpoint, it meets kind of, if you want to say, all the checklists for that. So, from a land use standpoint, staff had recommended approval of it. However, when it went to the planning commission, they did have a recommendation of a denial at a three-to-one vote. So, with that, if you have any questions, otherwise, I'll just leave it back to you guys.
Do we know why they recommended a denial?
One of the concerns that they had, and I know there's a couple of the commissioners here tonight that I believe even had on their speak, so if you, you know, want to talk to them, including our chair, they can answer, but generally, they had concerns about whether or not that was an appropriate land use, and also whether or not that development was going to be appropriate at this time, and, and things of that sort in that. So, without going into it further, but it, they kind of agreed that it maybe wasn't appropriate for that zoning at this time for that property. But like I said, there are a couple of the commissioners here, so if you want to speak to them directly.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
We do have a number of people. Jared Schrader? We've got five minutes. Give us your name and address and.
Yeah, my name is Jared Schrader. My wife and I live at 1251 North Midwest Boulevard there. And so, we went to the planning commission meeting earlier, and we had a lot of questions, some which I'm not sure if you guys would be able to answer, but due to this, but my main concern is, we've lived there for 10 years. We moved out there because we enjoy having the peace and quiet, but being close to Guthrie and be able to, you know, still be a part of the community, but, you know, my wife and I both grew up on farms, and, and we really enjoyed that, and to be able to put it, you know, a complex over there would kind of defeat the purpose of why we moved there. But I understand things have to change sometimes, but to this aspect, you know, we, we watched that the Love's Truck Stop came in, and for those of us that have lived there over this time since that's happened, traffic concerns are a big thing for us. You know, there's currently not even lines painted on the street, you know, from Midwest Boulevard down to 33, and if you don't watch, the semi trucks will pull out in front of you, you know, virtually could cause an accident with that. So, with that being said, you know, we, with industrial complex, we'd be looking at more truck traffic and, and things like that up there. One question I do have is, are there any current investors that are planning on occupying that property once, if it, if it were to go through?
Well, I think that, you want to take that, Leroy?
Well, it doesn't quite work that easy, because when you try to recruit an industry to a community, and you don't have a shovel-ready industrial park, and they come to visit your town and say, "We want 20 acres to put an industry in," and then you explain to them, "Well, we got 80 acres, but it's really just a farm, doesn't have utilities to it." Well, they go right up the road to the next town where there's a shovel-ready site that already has utility, has been subdivided zone. So, it puts us in a, an uncompetitive position to try to recruit industries if we don't have a shovel-ready industrial park to market. It's kind of like having a shoe store, but you don't have any shoes in the store to show anybody.
I understand that. So, there's currently not any other properties that could already be maintained for this, this purpose?
Not of this nature magnitude, with it being on Interstate 35 and direct access to it, the availability to get redundant gas and electric service at that site, because a lot of industries depend now to have redundancy on their utility, so if one leg of electricity goes off, they got the other leg so they can keep manufacturing. So, it is an ideal site for, not heavy industry, of course, that would use rail service, but light industry, it is an optimum site.
And would there be any problem with rezoning it into an ag-zoned property instead of this?
If you rezoned it to ag, you would not be able to sell it and use it for industrial property for industries to build on.
My other concern is, too, that we put a lot of time and investment in, you know, cleaning up our property and, and making it nice, and I've talked to several people in the real estate business, and, and I was told that there's a very good chance that having something like this move in next door to you, that it will drop your property value. Now, I know we talked about that in the meeting before, and they said there's nobody that would sign their name to that effect, but if you look, you can, you can find that that's a true case, which, you know, really doesn't do us any, any good as all, as well. So, I guess with my, my last comment, and just something to think about, I don't know if any of you ever lived out in the country, but for those of you that live in the city, if somebody were to come in and tear down the house next to you and build a gas station because it would bring revenue to the city, how would that, you know, feel for you? And I'd like to leave that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we had Jody, excuse me if I say this wrong.
(inaudible) you pronounce that right?
Arnsbrook.
Close.
Best I could do. You'll have to correct it.
I will. My name is Jody Arnsbrook. I live at 911 North Midwest Boulevard. I've got some dental issues going on, so pardon me if I slurred a little bit. I live directly across the street west of that proposed rezoning of that 80 acres. And as you all are probably aware, no, we are not, we are outside the city limits, so we are not allowed to vote or hold office on any city committees, anything like that. So, we do thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. So we do thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. We were given this opportunity to talk at the planning committee on July 19th and I would just like to share with you all some of the things that was discussed and some questions that we had. I've lived at my current address for 35 years, choosing to do so because it is quiet, it is peaceful, and it's beautiful. I can watch the sunrise from my front porch and the sunset from my back porch. There is always something to see, be it deer, turkey, or birds as they are raising their young. I'm sorry. And as my neighbor said, we have all made a lot of improvements on our property. You can drive up that road and I think it's a gorgeous road to be on. We all have animals there. We are raising cattle, horses. I have a herd of alpacas there. None of that comes cheap. Can you imagine if you were told that you were going to be neighbors with a loud polluting equipment and the possibility of this continuing throughout the day and night, possibly weekends and holidays? Because my understanding was, once you, something goes in there, they have, they can run a second shift or a third shift if they want to. That creates havoc to farm-raised animals of all kinds, which either would result in us getting rid of them or having to get psychiatric help for our horses. I also have been told by a local realtor that there's a good possibility something like that would decrease our property values by 15 to 20 percent. For my house alone, that's between $15,000 and $80,000. That is a big chunk of change you're talking. There is no infrastructure on this land, we understand, and that is why you all are wanting to rezon it. We understand that that is a cost that the city would have to incur first. And we had questions, is, do you all have so much money that you're just going to throw it towards an infrastructure with building and they may come? What about the tunnel by the rock that we have to drive around? What about the bridge that's out on Pine Street? We could go on and on and we've heard here and while I've been sitting here, other money issues, I guess, if you will. We just don't understand why you want that piece of land to do it when there already is land out by the airport to we build on. Rezoning will require road construction, traffic jams. All, in this area, it's already way too heavily traveled. The road situation is horrible. That S curve from the Loves Truck entrance to Highway 33 is and has been, just accidents waiting to happen. The trucks simply do not look, nor do they stop when pulling onto Midwest Boulevard from Loves or onto Highway 33. Those frequent accidents that you can look up will, you can see at any point that these happen. I did not go into detail with how often, but I think that would be easily looked into. They just, it just doesn't work as it is. The road narrows significantly right past that 50, the Loves stopped there and it would cause, you'd need major road issues also. We also found out that no city, county, or state entity will currently claim and therefore make the necessary improvements to College from Pine and Highway 33. Multiple calls have been made to all these agencies with them all resulting in there is no clear-cut entity that's responsible for those roads, so no one does anything. Once in a great while, if there's leftover tar from the State Highway Department on the county barn, they'll come and patch a few holes. That whole road needs to be torn up and replaced. I would urge each of you to get out there, drive that road just to see for yourself because you just won't believe how bad it is. We can't even begin to imagine how much worse it would be if there becomes additional 18-wheelers and heavy-duty equipment on that road. It's horrible. And in closing, I would ask that each of you put yourselves, put in our places and try to understand how very, very strongly the residents of that area are against this rezoning. How would each of you feel if you were told that the places across the street from you are going to be torn down and rezoned to put in God only knows what kind of industry? These are places that we do sit on our porches. We watch our children and our grandchildren play. And in my situation, I'm enjoying my retirement right there in that nice peaceful place. So, and I've worked really hard for that. I don't want an industry plant across the street and that's exactly where you all are proposing that we go. I know this is personal, but that's kind of the way I mean. So in closing, we just ask that you all would agree with the recommendation made by the planning and development committee and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnsbrook. In addition, I've got Joe Chapel, Chris Bryant. Either one of y'all like to talk? Chris, I don't know if you're trying to talk on 12 or 13 or both.
I can talk on both.
Okay.
I thought I would take the opportunity. Chris Bryant, 1601 West Cleveland Avenue here in Guthrie, wanted to introduce myself as the newest chair of the planning commission and wanted to encourage and foster collaboration amongst the two bodies as we have some, some big decisions to make. And I would like to encourage the council to watch the planning commission meetings and to read the minutes and engage in that way because as the residents have shared, lots of questions were asked, thoughtful discussion was had. And regarding this particular agenda item, you know, we understand this has been in the comprehensive plan, that it's been a priority for the city council to have a shovel-ready site and an industrial park. And I value that and want that for the city of Guthrie. But based on the concerns of the neighbors who do not technically live in city limits, but they pay sales tax dollars, they attend our schools, and they're members of this community, it seemed like from a land use perspective, going from very rural agricultural to light industrial was a pretty big jump. And then beyond that, even though it's outside of the purview of the planning commission to think about budget, I do have questions myself about the market research for an industrial park right now at this time, especially this year. And, you know, what, what kind of investment do we have to make upfront in order to, you know, build it and possibly attract new business? But there are many communities around the country of our size that have had very unsuccessful attempts to build an industrial park. They spend millions of dollars bringing utilities and waiting for business to arrive and it doesn't happen. And those are our taxpayer dollars and from a land use perspective, I want us to, to use our, our land as, in a way that's, creates wealth and value and, and is also enhancing to the quality of life of our residents. So those are my two cents based on this particular agenda item. And with that, I'd encourage any further questions you may have. Thanks.
I've got a question. After hearing the way it was explained by Leroy, what is your, how should we get one if we don't get the utilities and get it planted and divided and all of that? How should the community go about getting a place where industry can come in?
Sure. I mean, I'm, I'm not the expert on that. Like I said, it's a, it's a question that I have that is perhaps outside of the purview of planning, but, you know, I do take an interest in what other communities have done with this sort of thing. And I think businesses want to move to a place that has a high quality of life to begin with. And, and I also have questions about, is it possible to, you know, how much do you have to pay on the front end before you, before you make a deal with a prospective tenant in a, in a business park? And what does the market research say about the viability of that right now? Those are just questions I have. I don't have any answers, really. But I wondered if there was other property, I know I-35 is desirable, but if there was other property in the city that could be advantageous for that as well. But at the time, based on the concerns of the residents and some of the, some of the realities of annexing the land whenever it was annexed, but then really not providing a lot of benefits or improvements to the area since then, I think that's a bad, bad faith, you know, effort on our part as the city to not, at least offer something in return for that annexation. And so, you know, it's kind of hard to justify spending millions. I don't know how much it's going to cost spending that kind of money for the possibility of economic development when we can't maintain our bridges and roads as it is.
Can I talk again?
Sure.
Sorry, sorry.
No, go ahead.
My son is now choosing to raise his family in the same piece of property. His address is 921. He could not be here today. Before, he worked for the State Department, which he does now. He worked for a staffing entity out of Stillwater. They had a lot of contracts for things here in Guthrie. I think he even did through maybe the city of Guthrie, his company did. He did some research and he found that even though, what, little bit of technical engineering type jobs that they wanted, that would typically be needed for an industry park, he couldn't even get them in Guthrie. He had to reach as far away as Perry to get applicants to fill those types of positions that are already there and are needed. So as far as tax dollars coming in, they would probably be only from the industry because those people that would fill those positions are going to live in Edmund or Nuthor, Cloma City, or Stillwater, or Perry. That's been proven by him trying to fill positions in Guthrie from contracts that he already has with people here.
All righty, is there any more discussion or any more questions and more comments?
I'd have a few for some clarification. Again, want to be very respectful of the area residents and their concerns and comments. As I talked earlier, in general, importance of industrial park to a community, shovel-ready industrial parks are essential to recruitment of new industry and the potential expansion of existing industry. You got to have a place for them to go. And if you don't have a shovel-ready site, you're not going to be in a position to recruit. You can't even submit proposals to industries to recruit them because you don't have an industrial park. They're an important component to community growth and sustainability. Job creation brings new money into the community. They sell their products outside, brings new money in. I would point out, some may be aware, some may not, but this site was purchased in 2000 by the city of Guthrie for the specific purpose of developing an industrial park. So that went, that went into play or motion back in 2000, 20 years ago. June 14th, the real estate purchase contract, item four, it was agreed to name the industrial park to John R. Flash Industrial Park. In the amendment to the real estate contract, it says, "At such time as the authority constructs improvements and bring water and sewer utilities to the real property described Exhibit A for the purpose of developing said tract is an industrial park." So it's not been a secret that the city has planned to put an industrial park out there since the year 2000, the last 20 years. Dan pointed out, the 2002 City of Guthrie Comprehensive Plan, Economic Development on page 18, it says, "Guthrie has implemented one of the nation's most effective downtown revitalization programs and its unique character, businesses, special events have become staples of its local economy. Despite this, however, incomes in the community remain relatively low and industrial and business developments is relatively scarce. Guthrie has a very small industrial base." And then under Economic Opportunity Areas, page 28 of the plan, "Guthrie should use Interstate 35 and the airport as catalyst for significant economic development." Somebody mentioned the airport a while ago. You're restricted to aviation-related industries at the airport, so there's a lot of industries that can't go at the airport. It has to be aviation-related. Guthrie lacks substantial industrial development, although some significant growth has occurred along the industrial road corridor. Older industrial areas along Cottonwood Creek and Railroad Spurs associated with railroad in the center of town have deteriorated because of both industrial change and flood issues. Guthrie's most strategic industrial and commercial growth in the future will be related to I-35 and the airport rather than to rail service that heavy industriically demands. City policy should take advantage of growth opportunities within these development areas, which include commercial and industrial development, Highway 33 interchange, major visitor service development has occurred at this interchange. And if you look, and I won't bother handing these out now, but if you look at the map for development in our own comprehensive plan from 2002, this gray area, which is this 80 acres, is identified for an industrial development, an industrial business park. I would point out, on August 9th, Special City Council Meeting 2019, our planning retreat developing the existing 80-acre city-owned site of College Avenue and Midwest Boulevard into a shovel-ready industrial park was the top economic development project identified by the city council. To talk about the type of industries, because there was some concerns expressed there, the I-1 restricted manufacturing warehousing district, the, this district is intended primarily for manufacturing and similar plants and warehouses that are conducted so that the noise, odor, dust, glare of the operation is completely confined within the enclosed building on the site, not outside. So the impact on the neighbors would be reduced by the type of industry and the covenants that you would have on the industrial park. Buildings in this district should be architecturally attractive and surrounded by landscape yards. And again, we are working on covenants for the industrial park that would require them to meet the standards. And we have budgeted in the budget for the industrial park for upgrades to College Avenue from Highway 33 back to Midwest Boulevard. That should address at least some of the questions as about, as far as the condition of the road. Again, respectful...
Leroy, would it be no doubt that we talked to if we wanted a traffic signal out in that area?
My understanding, and Tenny can correct me, there is already plans by ODOT at 105 and 33 to put a traffic signal in there and that is in play right now, I think.
Fantastic. That could help solve some of your traffic issues, especially the big trucks turning. I know exactly what you're talking about because I worked out that way. Don's out that way a lot and we see all that, we see all that traffic. We know what's going on.
And again, I want to be respectful to the opinions of the ones that spoke, but I just wanted to provide the other side of the equation as well.
All right, any other questions? Any other discussion?
Well, it's very, it's, it's tough. I mean, all the way across the board. I've been on this council about five and a half years and we've talked about this for that long, at that 80 acres. And it's been on council agendas and workshops and all kinds of different discussion about it, from doing a ballpark to shovel-ready industrial. And I had no idea it wasn't zoned proper. I, I'm assuming that's what's bringing people into this meeting because had it been zoned proper, it would have already been done, I guess, right? I mean, we wouldn't even be having this meeting. I feel horrible about it because I understand what y'all are going through. But I do hear Leroy's side of it as well, is that, you know, this thing's been in the works for 20 years. And it has. I mean, that's just what it was bought for. And I know for a fact it's been discussed for five and a half.
I've been to probably six workshops, I think.
Um, I know it's just...
We've discussed it considerably. You're right.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the zoning to I-1 restricted manufacturing warehouse.
Go ahead, second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, unanimous. All right, we'll move on to item 13, discussion and possible action to adopt and approve ordinance number 3333, amending the City of Guthrie Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Building, Plumbing and Electricity. Article 22, Building Design Standards by repealing Section 4-422, Commercial Building Appearance Standards, Section 4-423, Residential Appearance Standards, Section 4-424, Penalty, where I lost it, Penalty in Their Entirety, Amending Chapter 16, Planning and Zoning, Article 2, Zoning, Section 1615, Adoption by Reference. Zoning Ordinance, uh, ordinance number 2422, Zoning Ordinance of the City, Article Accessory to Residential and Article 5, General Provisions Applying to All, to Several Districts, Section 6, Architectural Design of Accessory Buildings and Fences, Repealing All Conflicting Ordinances and Providing for Separability. Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. They are, the, I'm going to go over it, kind of give a summary of how we got here today, because this has been in front of the council, it's been in front of the planning commission, so I'm going to kind of remind everybody where it started and where we got to, and then go give a, basically the highlights of the current ordinance. This amendment started back in March, it went to the March 20th Planning Commission Meeting. Its original iteration of, of all the requirements was approved 5-0 by the Planning Commission. On May 19th, the ordinance went to the city council. There were some concerns on a few of the requirements and that, so it was decided at that time that a three-member committee of the council would be formed to work with staff for fine-tuning the ordinance. That ordinance, then, the recommended version of that from the committee went to the July 7th, 2020 City Council Meeting. At that meeting, because there was substantial changes from what had previously been approved at the Planning Commission, it was essentially tabled and then sent back to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. On July 15th, the Planning Commission had reviewed the ordinance at their special meeting and recommended 4-0 approval, and I'm going to go over that, because it's the current version that's in, in front of you. Some of this will sound familiar, some may, there's a, there was a couple changes at the Planning Commission, even from what they had originally, but one of the other changes that happened is, on the residential side, just to make it a little bit clearer and a little bit more clarity, it was actually broken up into four areas. General residential, which is pretty much single family, or single-family citywide, the Guthrie Proper Overlay District, which is part of this ordinance that's being created, the multifamily standards, and then also the Guthrie Capital Townsite Historic District. That way, it was understood that there's going to be four different areas, if you want to say that these regulations are going to be put forth. So under the general residential, it's, it's going to require curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in new subdivisions. Any development in existing neighborhoods or subdivisions, if there's sidewalks, curbs, and gutters on the adjacent parcels, it will have to be provided. If there is not, then they will not have to be provided. The current ordinance requires a two-stall garage, this would only require a one-stall garage. There also was the elimination of the current requirement that garages cannot protrude forward of the front facade. What's in front of you tonight would have no limitation on that garage protruding forward of that front facade. And then finally, there were some adjustments on the exterior, or the types of exterior materials that could be utilized. Vinyl siding, aluminum siding, fiber cement siding, or commonly known as hardy board, and stucco have, were added as acceptable, acceptable exteriors. Also, there was another stipulation put in that if you're on an acreage of five acres or larger, you could have a metal exterior home, or what people commonly call now barn dominiums in that. But again, that's on five acres or larger, which actually works well with our accessory structures, where you can have all metal and that on those acreages. So now the Guthrie Proper Overlay District, and I, there was a reduction in the size of the district from the original proposal that went forth. A lot of the area that encompasses the southern, of what would have, what is the southern part of the district, basically north of Perkins Avenue between Wentz and Pine Street and south to University Avenue was eliminated. And if ever, anybody's been down in that area, there's not a significant amount of development, and really, any type of development would probably be good, so, and, and because there's not a whole lot of development, there wasn't probably the need to have that preservation of, of some of the homes, which is the intent of the overlay district. Added craftsmen as one of the acceptable architectural styles, so that way, again, everybody understood, stands that it's a craftsman, bungalow, colonial, Victorian-type architecture that is expected in this district. Also changed some of the pictures to reflect that. The original ordinance, and one of the ones that went to the council, had a fenestration requirement, which is basically openings in, in a facade, or windows and, and things like that, that had to be 70% of any side. That got changed to say only, or I'm sorry, 25, not to exceed 70. That was only for the front. The remaining sides, there were just provisions that would put in there that would say it has to be compatible with the adjacent homes. So if you're in an area where there's not a lot of homes with windows on the side, you didn't necessarily have to put those in there. One of the other things that got broken up was the attached garage section. The, as was stated before, there, or just, or the same as in the Guthrie Proper Overlay, it only requires a one-stall garage. However, it was to be, if it was attached, it had to be set back 20 feet, that was the original proposal. The current proposal would be that it'd only have to be set back 10 feet from the front facade, and its purpose is to basically, again, have that garage not be in a prominent part of the front facade. In addition, if, there were stipulations that if you have a two-stall garage or larger, that it would be in the rear yard, or if it is attached, have a side or rear loaded or entrance to it. So once again, you don't have two or three garage doors being a prominent part of the streetscape in the front of it. It would look more like a part of the actual home itself. Within that district, also, the vinyl siding, aluminum siding, fiber cement siding, hardy board were added as acceptable materials. And then stucco or similar-type materials to that, you know, in that could be allowed, but only up to 25% of the overall design. And that was, again, for the overlay district only. As you know, there's, there might be one or two homes in there that have some stucco, but it's not a traditional exterior for the timeframe in which most of those homes were built, but it does add for a good design, so that's why it was limited. So that pretty much sums up the Guthrie Proper Overlay District. The multifamily residential, that really didn't change from the beginning. It, it's pretty straightforward. It requires you to have, you know, basically decent-looking buildings. The one thing that was added to be consistent throughout was the additional materials, vinyl siding, aluminum siding, fiber cement siding, hardy board, and stucco, just like you would have anywhere else citywide. And then, as I mentioned, the Guthrie Capital Townsite Historic Overlay District, it was just added, but basically, all it says is that any development in that area is going to be per the HPC ordinance and subject to the Preservation Commission review and approval. So now on to the commercial architectural design standards. This saw a lot of change from the original in that, not necessarily bad either, but there was a couple exteriors that were added. It, it had said, you know, brick, stone, and that type of stuff, but we also added sandstone, tinted texture, concrete masonry units. Those were the two that were added in there. The requirement to have all buildings be at least 60% brick was eliminated. There was also a part of that where it said, requirement that all elevations visible to the public shall include architectural design elements. That still remained, it was just put in a different section. Added a stipulation that materials such as the EPIS, the synthetic stucco, wood, stucco, those type of materials could be secondary elements, but they could not exceed 20% of the overall design. Added stipulation regarding the facade colors, and that basically just is saying that we can't have a, basically caution yellow type, or, you know, a neon green type building, that it has to be basically compatible with it, or have more of an irktone type color to it. Again, it's just to make sure that we don't have somebody go completely crazy and want their building to stick out for purposes of color and that, so there's not a, you know, a great detail with that. Also maintain the requirement that metal can be allowed, but only as a design element, not to exceed 10% of the overall building. Maintain the enhanced screening requirements, and this is again in the back, whether it's fencing, landscaping, and that, especially when it abuts residential areas or around residential areas. One of the other things that was created, and this kind of came out of the original 60% brick that got turned into creating a corridor area that's on, on Division Street and Noble Avenue, and it would be from Industrial Boulevard North on, on, on Division. So basically, it takes the historic district south to industrial, and then the historic district east along Noble to the interstate. And so within that area, there was a few other criteria that were put in. It stated that all the buildings shall be orientated towards Division and Noble, and that those front facades, the original requirement, or the original suggestion out of the committee was 100% red brick. At the Planning Commission, they changed that to 60% red brick, and a lot of the reason was because they felt that there would be more ability to have better design of some of the other elements in that, whether it's a, you know, masonry-type look or that, it just added to a, a better ability for design and architecture. Because even if you look in the buildings downtown, they're not all 100% brick on the front facades. There's other elements in there that add to that design. So that was one of the primary reasons that they wanted to go with the 60% red brick. It still has that Guthrie red brick, but again, not 100%. And then the remaining 40% would be any combination of acceptable materials. Again, it goes back to that, you know, this, any of the, the stucco, the, the, you know, sandstone, and it could be brick or anything like that. The only mandate would be 60% red brick on the front. And so that pretty much takes care of the, the hotspots, if you want to say, of the commercial. What are the other things that was changed? Oh, yes.
I've got a question. You said of the front, but if you're talking about, of a part of the building that's facing A Street, or just Noble or Division?
Yeah, it would be in that corridor, so if it faces, right.
Any street?
No, if it faces Noble or Division. So even if there's a side street, that doesn't have to be red brick. That can be the other acceptable materials. The only thing it has to be is if it's face, the building that faces on Division or Noble has to be 60% red brick, a minimum. If there's a side street, that can be any of the other acceptable materials, it doesn't have to be red brick. One of the other things that I think was kind of confusing is trying to lump in the commercial with the industrial standards and put the exceptions. So one of the things that transpired was just put architectural design for the industrial as a separate section. So it still has the stipulation that if you're an industrial property, that you're, again, in that corridor area on Division, don't really have any on Noble, but if you're on Division and you're industrial, you still have to meet all of those requirements of the commercial design standards. Again, that's to keep the compatibility along there. But outside of that, then you don't have to worry about those stipulations. It does allow a combination of exterior materials in the industrial zone, including metal, and you could theoretically have 100% metal building in the industrial areas. It does add some architectural or design elements, primarily looking to have emphasis on the front entry. Again, it's to have, even when you have in an industrial building, you don't have just a bunch of garage doors or, or entry doors on the front in a big, you know, rectangular building. There is some type of maybe canopy or, or some design on the front in that, so it, it's not as probably intense as the commercial, but again, we're going to get something a little bit more than just a rectangular building with, with maybe a few windows in it. And then, I just wanted to add that the industrial requirements in this ordinance are what's proposed for the industrial park in their CC&Rs, the, the covenants, conditions, and restrictions. So that sums up the industrial. The exceptions part, as you may remember, it was originally saying the Planning Commission. That has changed to now say that any exceptions or modifications to any of these standards would go through the special use permit process, which is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then a final decision by the city council. Now we get on to the accessory building standards. I know there's a few people here that are, are going to want to talk about that, and before I get started on that, I also provided, I had three emails that were sent to me regarding the accessory structures that I provided the council tonight, again, in favor of the current proposal. There was, I would say, a lot of different changes throughout this whole process with that. At the beginning, there wasn't a whole lot of changes. Through some of the committee, there was some significant changes, and then it kind of came back to relatively no changes. The current version that is in front of you tonight is exact, I believe with the exception of the accessory structure stuff I'll go over, exactly what the Planning Commission had recommended originally. So it keeps intact all the current overlays we have, which are north and south on Division, east and west on Noble, and then up in the little bit of the northeast area there, kind of by Walnut, and as you get up by the high school, the, the other addition, I forget over there, that area. And what that says is, in those areas, you cannot have metal accessory structures. If you're outside those overlays, then there's the ability to have metal structures. But the metal is also, has some specifications, so it can't be corrugated metal, or, you know, galvanized metal and that, but it can have a metal exterior. So that all remains in place with the current ordinance. The changes that happened primarily at the Planning Commission were in regards to the size and number of accessory structures. The current provision of figuring out the size stayed the same. It's 50% of the primary structure's livable area, or 850 square feet, whichever is less. So if you have a 1,200-square-foot house, you could have a 600-square-foot accessory structure, or not to exceed a 800, or 600-square-foot accessory structure. But if you have a 3,000-square-foot house, the largest you can have is 850 square feet. But the other change was the previous ordinance had to where a detached garage would not count as one of your accessory structures. So you could have a detached garage and two other accessory structures. That changed at the Planning Commission to say two accessory structures, period, which is pretty much what is in the current ordinance. So whether you have a detached structure or not, any accessory structure, you're limited to two. The other change that was in the previous ordinance, but that changed a little bit, was originally it stated for properties one acre or greater, there would be no limitation on the size of your accessory structure. It would come down to lot coverage and the total number as far as your limitations. At the Planning Commission, that changed. There was still some concern on one acre, because there are a number of one-acre properties in and around the lake area, and even on the outskirts of some of the, the original platted area and that. So this, the recommendation was to increase that to one and a half acres or greater, which does eliminate a lot of the properties from having unlimited accessory structures. And I will say that most of the people that have been concerned, or, or have been at the meetings with these particular, with that particular area, most everybody I have talked to is probably at the minimum three acres. Most of them are on five, 10-acre parcels and that. So for those people, it really didn't impact them, and I don't think any of them have an issue with that, because again, they're on much larger properties. The other change was, once again, it had the requirement, or the stipulation, that if a detached garage, it did not count, so you could have three accessory structures plus a detached garage. That went to simply three, period. So again, if you have a detached garage, whatever, you're limited to three. And so that pretty much sums up the accessory. And then fences, walls, and hedges, there really was no change throughout the entire time. That all remained the same. But just to remind everybody, there was the addition of woven wire, welded wire-type fences that are in a wood frame that would be allowed, and then chain link in the rear yards would be an allowable fence, or be allowable to have, I was about to say a fence, be allowed in the rear yards, because currently, by ordinance, it's not allowed at all. So finally, I hopefully summed it up enough in, in that, so if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, people want to talk to?
Yeah. All right, Kelly Watson.
How you doing? My name's Kelly Watson, I live at 6217 South Sooner Road, and I've been trying to get a accessory structure built since February. So according to the current deal, my house is not big enough. If anybody here works on anything, unless you drive a subcompact car, by the time you get a mower, an air compressor, and any kind of tools in there, the square footage of your shop is not going to be enough to do anything. And so if you have anything else, a camper, a boat, more than one vehicle, then they are just allowed to set out in the sun and deteriorate. So you have no opportunity to protect your investment on that. So you have no opportunity to protect your investment on that. And so, I live on five acres. I'm out on South Sooner Road. I don't have city water. Don't know where the nearest fire hydrant is, so probably not going to have a fire out there. Only time we see cops come by is when the lights are flashing and they're zooming. You know, a couple of good points made was, we have had the opportunity to fix Sooner Road. I don't know if anybody of you guys drive down it, but it's not easy that you can drive down it. It is rough. And so, I pretty much left out there to fend for myself, but at the same time, I had to pay taxes on it, but I don't get to build a shop so I can put all my stuff in undercover. It just has to be left out there. And so, I like to restore cars. I've done one. I'm fixing to start on another one. I can't take one apart in a little shop without risking scratching one. If any of you guys have ever had a car painted, that is not a cheap deal. You're not going to take the chance. So I'm not going to let a $70,000 truck sit outside while I try to rebuild 59 Plymouth.
How big's your property?
Five acres.
What size of building are you wanting to build?
I want to build 2,400 square foot.
Can he build that under your new ordinance?
Yeah. And so, that's what I'm wanting to do, is protect what I have, because the sun...
There's no limit on five acres, all right?
Correct. And so, I'm just trying to keep everything undercover. Not to mention, you lock it up, it's just, people can't drive by and see it, so there's less opportunity for somebody to slide by.
You want us to pass this so you get to work, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I can say, I've been in, I've been to several meetings. I've been to variance, I've been to planning commissions, I've been to meetings trying to get this done, and I'm just trying to get it fast.
Alrighty, thank you, Kelly.
All right, thank you.
Sharon Dennis?
Dennis.
Dennis, I did it right. Cool.
I'm Sharon Dennis, and my husband Tommy, we live at 5908 Southwest 21st Street. And did it. The only thing different is that we live on 10 acres, and we lost our barn in the tornado last August. So we tried to, it took us a while to clean up, and we started trying to rebuild in June and found out we couldn't rebuild it, even a smaller structure than we had, but a structure that's big enough to house our equipment and to do some work in. So this accessory structure is a very, very small part of this ordinance, but we ask you to please, please ask us.
So you're going to be happy about this too, huh?
We can move on, thank you.
Thank you. Chris or Joe, either of you want to talk?
Just here for questions if anybody has any.
Okay.
Leroy's got something he wants to say.
Well, I just got a few questions. On page three of the ordinance?
That got long ways, bud.
I know, I'm going.
You there?
Yeah.
On landscape?
Page three.
Three of 30. Have they marked that?
Three of 30?
Oh!
What?
Oh, you got, not, you got a new version, clean version.
Okay.
What's the one?
It's items B, 61B6. It used to have an exception in there. It says each new residence shall have a minimum of one tree of two inch caliper in the front yard. And it used to provide an exception for patio style homes where front yard dimensions were, would not accommodate a tree. We've taken that out. Is there a reason why we don't want to provide an exception for patio homes on not requiring a tree?
The reason, well, the reason I didn't have it in there is I figured that most all of that development would be through a planned development process, in which then there would be the ability to, you know, have those stipulations, criteria, whatever, taken care of. Because generally patio homes will not fit on our general lots between setbacks and that. Or what I was looking at is traditional patio homes in that, because they're going to have lots that are probably smaller than our current minimums, and again, they usually have zero lot lines on one side, and so usually those are going through a PD process to get those exceptions. However, if we think there's patio homes in that, we can put it back in. But that was the rationale.
Okay. Next one down, number seven. This is encouraged, so the use of colors that are compatible with the surrounding area is highly encouraged. And then it goes on to say, color determination shall be based on historic schemes appropriate for the style of the building. This is not in the historic district. It's not in the new Guthrie proper overlay district. This is just out in the general area. I would recommend that second sentence, color determinations be based on historic schemes. We shouldn't be requiring people to use the historic color palette if they're not in historic district or in the overlay district. So to me, that second sentence doesn't belong there.
That's a very good point. And it was one of those criteria that is in the current one, and I, you know, obviously it was just left because it's in the current, but I agree with Leroy. Outside the historic district, or even, you know, in that, there's no reason, so...
So if you adopt it, I would recommend you adopt it with that sentence stricken.
Yeah.
Under commercial architectural design and standards, and I can't get, 62.
I'm there.
Just want to make sure everybody understands, when we adopt this, these provisions apply citywide. So it's anywhere that the property is designed commercial, with the exception, there's more restrictive standards in the historic district, of course. These are citywide. So whether it's out by the landfill, or close to downtown, it's citywide. Just want to make sure everybody knew that. So that's just a point, as we make. Building exterior, which would be paragraph four, under 62B. So A says, primary exterior materials shall be stone, sandstone, cast stone, brick, or tenet, textured, concrete, masonry. When you do the math, you're only allowed 20% of stucco wood in paragraph B. You're allowed up to 10% metal in paragraph D. So that means 70% minimum of the exterior building has to be stone, sandstone, cast stone, brick, or tenet or textured concrete. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Leroy, what page are you on?
Well, 10 of 30 of them marked up on the red one.
Or nine of 25 on the clean version.
Hey, 255 on the agenda.
There you go.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Number one in your hearts.
So we used to allow up to 60% metal.
Yeah, now you're allowing 10.
Yes.
And that was not, I mean, when we had our meeting, that was nowhere near 10% from what I remember.
No, it's always been 10% limitation on metal, from the original ordinance through now.
Really?
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah. The one big change was the mandatory 60% brick on all sides.
Well, not the original ordinance.
No, I'm sorry, the original one of this, yeah, from the planning commission.
I'm not arguing against the ordinance, I just want to make sure that everybody understands. That's a pretty big swing from allowing 60% metal to allowing only 10% metal. Just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then, on, number, it used to be eight. So if you're looking at the clean version, it won't be there anymore. But eight used to say, individual corporate image architectural design elements, collars and signs shall be incorporated, only secondary elements to the development and not as a dominant element. Such elements must be consistent and blend with the larger development area. So I guess you could look at this two ways. Are we saying that by striking that, if a corporate image, they have a image that when you see it, you recognize that that is that? Are we saying they can no longer incorporate that corporate image into their design elements, even if it's secondary? Or are we just saying they can do whatever they want?
B.
They can do whatever they want?
Yes. I found that to be a restrictive condition, because like you said, you have many companies that have their design, logo, trademark, and that, and I felt that provision was far more restrictive, because it does say it has to be secondary and almost a non-part of the building. And so, by eliminating that, we don't have any restrictions per se.
So we may have more wide open to use?
Yeah, it became less restricted.
Okay, that's good. And then, on... I guess my last one that I would make comment on is on the outbuildings.
Mm-hmm.
And it's page 280 in your agenda packet. And again, I'm not arguing against it. I think what these individuals want to do with the size property they have is great and where it's located, but just do want to point out that if you have more than one and a half acres, there is no limit now to the size of your accessory structure, correct?
Correct.
There is a limit that you can't have more than 25% of your property developed.
Right. And then, overall number of three.
Yes. So if I've got one and a half acres, if I did my math correctly this afternoon, that's 65,340 square feet.
Sounds right.
So if you take 25% of that, that's 16,335 feet. So on a one and a half acres, I could have a 2,000 square foot home and a 14,000 square foot outbuilding. Just want to point that out on one and a half acres. And I don't know where the magic stopping point is. Your guys' makes sense. I'm not arguing against that, but on one and a half acres, you can have a 2,000 square foot house and over 14,000 square foot outbuilding. That seems a little extreme to me. I don't know what the magic number is. There's got to be a balance between what you guys are doing and this, and I don't know where that magic number is. But I just want to make sure I pointed that out to you all.
And I see what you're saying, but I think probably most people, you're always going to have the one, I'm sure.
Correct.
But most people probably aren't going to build anything bigger than like a 40 by 60, or what have you. You know what I mean? I mean, just...
But if I lived next to that one, it would make...
Well, then you'd feel like you're...
And I'm not being argumentative.
No, I got you.
Dan, do you think anybody will understand this if you die?
Yes.
Just curious.
Yes.
Because I've heard several, oh yeah, I did that.
I'll make sure I stay here till everybody in town fully understands all the codes, even if it takes 20 minutes.
What if you don't have nothing to say about that?
Well, that's true. But unfortunately, you know, in kind of, I guess, in some seriousness, in order to have, you know, some rhyme and reason to stuff, it has to be put in these ways with, you know, more of, I guess, the legal aspect of it than, you know, the common type stuff and that. So if push does come to shove, we have something that has some teeth and we can hold up again. So, yeah, it can be somewhat confusing to others, but honestly, it's also the reason that we, you know, that I'm there in that. You know, you can call me up at any time and I'll be, you know, talk to you and explain it and that, but it's just kind of the part of zoning.
All right, any more discussion, any more questions?
So originally, we talked about an overlay district that was stopped at industrial, went to Noble, down to I-35. That's where the overlay was. We had some overlay in the historic district behind Ace and some other areas. We eliminated the overlay from industrial out to I-35 on Division, and we eliminated overlay on the west side. What happened to that? No, we, it wasn't eliminated per se, it was just, I guess, reincarnated as a corridor. Because yes, there was original discussion on having a specific, you know, 100 feet, or 300 feet, or 500 feet from center line, but then it was basically creating the corridor from industrial to the historic district and the historic district east, and just the properties that front those rights of way to become that corridor.
Right. So what hap, how did, how did from industrial to I-35 get put back in? Because I asked James that, and I asked...
That was at the planning commission.
Okay, and I asked Cheryl the same thing, and all of us agreed that it was going to get cutted.
No, you're right, because you are correct that the committee version had taken out the accessory structure overlays.
Right.
And again, just to clarify for everybody, those overlays were strictly in place for saying metal, no metal. They had no other relevance whatsoever. And so, yes, those at the committee level, and what would have went to, or was going to go to the city council last time, was not in there. When it went back to the commission, that was recommended that those be added in, because they felt that metal buildings throughout the community was not going to be a good thing, and it wasn't something that they felt was going to be appropriate, because it was too drastic of a change.
And we're talking accessory...
Yeah, accessory structures, that's it. Accessory structures. And so, those overlays where it says again, metal versus no metal, was added in.
Well, how it all came up is, I was proposing 200 feet from the center line out south Division. James was proposing 300 feet.
Well, okay, yeah.
Okay, James was, James proposed 300 feet, and you said, well, if we're going to do that, let's just eliminate it. So we did.
Right, but there's two different things. We're talking two different, that was on the commercial. That was the commercial design standard.
That was on the overlay for accessory structures from, that was on the overlay, period, from industrial to I-35.
Well, if that was the case, then I'm sorry, I completely missed.
That wasn't the case.
I completely misunderstood what was going on.
That's what my understanding was, that's what James's was, and that's what Cheryl's was.
Okay.
And that's what ours is still today.
Okay. Then that wasn't conveyed, obviously, well enough to me, because that whole conversation was around the commercial architectural design standards, in the areas that we wanted to relate to red brick and having mandatory red brick requirements. I did not understand that that was...
That red brick requirement was only to industrial. We eliminated overlays outside of industrial, period.
And, well, I mean, that's still your option tonight, you know.
That's going to be my motion, but I'm going to be waiting for whatever Leroy's motions and whatever other council wants.
I just wanted to say that if you eliminate the overlays, as they are currently in there, it would allow metal buildings anywhere in the city limits.
No, it would allow them outside of industrial?
Nope, it would not. If you eliminate those overlays that are currently in the code, you can have metal buildings anywhere in the community.
There is still an overlay to industrial, to Noble.
No, it is not.
Well, then we'll make one.
Okay, that's fine.
Industrial to Noble, and Noble to I-35.
That's for commercial.
That's what we made in, we made it, period. That's what I thought we made in the meetings that we were at. Is, I thought we did an historical overlay, and we restricted pretty much everything in the historical overlay, and we opened it up outside of it, period. And that's what we did do.
It's at the council's discretion.
Is there a way...
Did we not?
We did take off the overlays at post...
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you did. It was for the accessory structures.
Well, it's for everything. It was for all of it.
Is there a way we can do something to give these people some relief so they can go on? Or is this all or nothing?
Well, I guess you could take portions of it out and adopt that.
What I would recommend, if you're all not ready to adopt this ordinance, is at least adopt an ordinance number 333 that amends the current ordinance, whatever size, but properties one and one and a half acres or greater in size. There is no limitation to size floor area as an accessory structure, and no more than three accessory buildings may be located on property, the detached garage towards the total allowable accessory buildings. And that's on page 280 in your packet. And at least adopt that amendment if you're not going to adopt the whole thing. And I think that allows... And I think that allows you all to do what you want to do.
I would make that motion to adopt that part of it and the rest of it. I have things that I don't like, and apparently the other council does too. We can work on that some more.
So how, what is this motion going to read? How's this going to read?
This, this motion would be to just-
Just don't do it at all. Just leave the things the way it is.
No.
These guys can't build their buildings.
No, no, I meant for the architectural design standards for commercial.
Just leave them the way they are.
No, we're not talking about that right now. We're talking about, so Kelly and these other people can get out there and do what they got to do.
You, you would amend ordinance number thirty-three for tonight's purpose is to just, uh, make the one change, uh, that properties one and a half acres or greater in size, A, no more than three accessory buildings may be located on the property, a detached garage counts towards the total allowable accessory buildings, and B, no limitation on the size floor area of an accessory structure.
Well, I'll second his motion to that.
And that, if I understand, is the only change that you all have to have to move forward, so we don't hold them up if there is further discussions on this.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Jeff?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Uh, we're sending this back for more further review.
The rest of it, but we will prepare an ordinance tomorrow, based on your motion tonight for signature. It takes thirty days, because it wasn't adopted with emergency clause, so it takes thirty days for that ordinance to go into effect.
Could we do an emergency on it?
You could, uh, but it was not presented with emergency clause, so I don't think we'd be good. But by the time you get your permits and all that, you're, thirty days probably be up anyway.
Well, we hope we helped you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You bet.
Thank you. All right, any comments from members of council?
Not me.
Nobody? Jeff?
Just going to make a, one quick comment. Kent Mitchell passed away last week. I know most of you guys should know who he is. Uh, he was, he did a lot of things in the community, so, uh, you know, uh, just wanted to let everybody know that as well. And then also, uh, I was just noticing on Facebook the other night, Betsy Randolph has been with the Highway Patrol now for twenty-five years, and so I thought I'd bring that up and have a funny one with her. But, uh, other than that, uh, continue to wear your mask. I think we're kind of on the downward slide now, so hopefully this will start kind of going away. Other than that, that's it. Oh, and thank you, staff. Appreciate y'all's hard work, and, and, uh, that's it.
James?
No comments.
Nobody else? Uh, Steve Gantling's mom is, uh, very, very sick. That's why we're not here tonight, so keep him in your prayers. Uh, people, if you haven't done anything on the census yet, two percent loses us like thirty-five million dollars if we don't, if we don't get out there and actually, if that two percent don't fill out their census forms, there's a lot of money we lose. So get out there and fill out the census forms and-
He wants to talk, wait. He's got something to say.
Go ahead, Don.
Little Steve, you're slow, slow your roll. No, all I wanted to comment, it's, you know, for some of the people that were here tonight, and for some of them that may be watching or whatever, I want you guys to sit in our seat, which you probably can't unless you've been there, but a lot of these decisions we make up here, we were put up here to try to make the best outcome for ten thousand people in this town. And every time we make a decision, somebody's not going to like it, somebody is going to like it. But in the long term, we have to look to the good of the majority of those ten thousand people. I know sometimes it seems unfair, but, you know, sometimes we can't hold up nine thousand nine hundred people for something that a hundred people don't want, and we can't, can't go the other way either. So I know there's been, you know, it's, there's some tough decisions made up here, but we have to take into account what's better for everybody in the city and not just a handful. And that's what we try to do, it's what everybody up here tries to do, and it's what Brian was saying, you know, he felt the pain, he knew it was, it's a tough decision. Those kind of deals are tough for, for all of us, but we kind of have to look at the overall good of who it's going to help. You know, some people, I know sometimes our decision may ruin some people's day, but we have to try to look at the overall good. We're not just up here to have fun, so, anyway.
Anybody else?